In the meeting of the Saint Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So we have some special guests here this evening, so I'm going to punt it over to Dr. Smith, who will introduce everyone.
Yes, so we are joined by friends at Leonard Town Elementary School in the Anchored For Life Program at Leonard Town Elementary School. And for people who don't know what the Anchored For Life Program is, it is a program in which there are helping new students become oriented to the school, helps kids when they're, when they're realizing. So this is for active service, children of active service and people who are, who are, who are serving. And it brings them in, it's a great opportunity for them all to come together. Now, do we have somebody who could give a little bit better information on this? Would somebody like to come up and, and actually do a better job than me? So how about if we have somebody come up and do a better job than me, and I have the slides that you have, so you can tell us a little bit about it. So you'd have to, you'd have to come up using the handheld microphone and stand in front of the Saint Mary's County Public Schools logo, because I'd like them to know a little bit about you before you actually lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So how about if we go ahead and do that? So come on up and join us in front of the Saint Mary's County Public Schools logo?
Um, so Anchored For Life is, for example, like you said, for active duty military people. Like if someone comes new in the building, we would, one of our crew members or one of our other people would help us, you know, it would, it would mostly be two people at a time, or sometimes one. And then we would introduce them to the school, you know, walk them around, and then introduce them to the teachers, and we would also show them where the cafeteria is, where the P room is, and all the other stuff.
That is fantastic. That is a great description of Anchored For Life. And we have team members, crew members, your leadership skills. You do an incredible amount of, of work to welcome people and also then develop yourself as well, because you are an incredibly resilient group of people. And I think I have, is that everybody who is in Anchored For Life at Leonard Town Elementary School? That's fantastic. And so with this, you're leading us in the pledge, so go ahead and lead us. Please stand, and the flag's right over there. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that was fantastic. Thank you so much. Is there somebody from the school? I see we have principal, we have teachers, we have IRTs, we have people. Would anybody like to share a little, a little bit more before we have our fantastic pledges?
I'm Jamie Jamison, school principal, and I have with me some important leaders within our building and outside of our building. Our Anchored For Life staff members, sponsors are Ms. Foster Kelson and Ms. Frost, our IRT and school counselor. We also have with us our military liaison to Pax River Base, Ms. Dawn Simpson, and she coordinates with Ms. Annie Christensen, our military family life counselor, who has her home within our building. So this is kind of the adult leadership behind the student leaders.
That's fantastic group.
Exactly. And I was quite impressed with their ability to stand up impromptu and speak to you.
That is leadership.
So standing beside me, we have Finn Roycroft, Kate and Nancy, and Danielle Vereen.
That's fantastic. What grade? Are you guys all in fifth grade?
No, I'm in third.
Wow.
I'm in fifth.
Third.
Wow. That's pretty mature. I thank you very much. You have started us off right, and thank you very much to everybody who supports active military deployed personnel and the, and the children who come with them. Obviously, we, we are incredibly proud of the service of your, of your, of your parents, but we also are incredibly proud of the service that you provide to yourself and to others, and that really is just quite a testament to, to the county we live in, in Saint Mary's County, and Leonard Town Elementary School in particular. So thank you very much for starting us off right tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put that back in its holster. All right, thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have superintendent and our student board member update.
Okay. So I'll go through this update, and then when I'm done, we'll take a little break. And so in the event that you have like Christmas shopping and things that you need to do, that's okay. So we take no offense. So, uh, fantastic. We've had, we've had a lot of stuff going on. We had our Slack meeting last week with superintendent, student leadership advisory council group all getting together. We talked about student leadership. We talked about college and career and advanced placement opportunities, because there was a lot of discussion of what comes next with our students, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grades. We talked about one of the most pressing issues across all of our secondary schools, which is student bathrooms. And actually, Dr. Marr and I visited Esperanza Middle School, and they have some very good ideas on how to address things, some low-tech, but great ways. We're all kind of focusing in on how we are going to best welcome our freshmen next year to high school, and how we can make sure that we make our rising freshman orientation evenings and all the outreach impactful as possible to our kids. And then, we had a financial literacy reality fair. They basically were field testing. Education Systems Federal Credit Union and Cedar Point Federal Credit Union came out and they did a real-life planning exercise for kids to understand, you know, they, they got a, a trifold that showed, this is your job, this is how much you make, this is how much comes out of your, your paycheck automatically with FICA and all the fun stuff that happens, and then going through and all the different elements of being an adult, adulting, from rent to clothing to food to if you're gonna have a, a pet. It was really, it was really well received. And the representatives from the Education Systems Federal Credit Union, Cedar Point Federal Credit Union, they wanted feedback from the kids on what worked really well, where they could maybe tailor things. It was really, it was a great, it was a great informative session, and I definitely think that we all have some learning to do when we talk about managing our budgets. And I didn't get to share with everybody, but I've, I've been on a seventy-five dollar a week allowance the majority of my life. And it's worked. It's worked. It's worked really well. And so a lot of these kids, when they, they realize, like, oh, I'm gonna make sixty thousand dollars. I'm good to go. And then when they put everything together, they're, I'm making sixty thousand dollars, I'm in, gonna be operating in debt every single month, unless I modify what I'm doing. Very eye-opening. Uh, we had caroling, caroling, it's been fantastic. Chopticon High School, the Peace Pipers and the Chopticon Divas did the annual Madrigal Dinner. They're gonna actually be caroling here tomorrow. Incredible. The choral director, Paley Bonjourne is just amazing. Those kids are amazing. I could not believe all of the people, they, they can't, the talent is just stunning. Great Mills, choral students performed here yesterday. They came through and they caroled us under their incredible director, Sarah Nelson. She did a marvelous job. It was great. And then today, Leonard Town High School students, the choral students performed Christmas carols for us for our holiday luncheon under the choral director and direction of Kylie Testan, and they sang the, the song "The River" at my request. And now I owe Kylie a huge favor, because it was quite an undertaking. They did a beautiful job.
And our own student member of the board was
And front and center. The talents of Ms. Heisler are, are, are manifold. So the last is Santa over Southern Maryland. What a, what a really, really neat idea. They sent it out. I'll let, I'll let this speak for itself. It's amazing. Oh, I will let this speak for itself. It's amazing. I will hopefully play this video. It might or may not work. If it doesn't work, I'm gonna be so disappointed. You can all watch it on here.
Add to the rescue.
Yeah, swap it over.
Yeah.
If you can.
Attention on deck?
We are part of the reindeer flight team, helping Santa out. Have a special reconnaissance mission to find all the good boys and girls concentrated here in Southern Maryland. We're looking at all the schools today, checking them out, and just making sure that Santa knows exactly where they'll be throughout the day leading up to Christmas. The reconnaissance vehicle today is a mighty MH sixty Sierra Nighthawk.
Call it a sleigh hawk, if you will.
It's one of our
S-L-E-I-G-H.
We just want you to be able to see Santa, be thinking about what's on your list.
We're hoping that there's gonna be excitement and people running around, just welcoming Santa to Southern Maryland.
Santa wants to see your smiling faces. He wants to see your big waves.
Any day that we get to have those kind of passengers is a really fun day. Santa checks his list, and he's checking it twice, and just having this last check before Christmas coming up very soon, really just brings together all his work that he put in this year.
Ho, ho, ho. How fantastic is that? Now that's, I don't know anybody else that's having Santa come along on a night, sleigh hawk to say hello to everybody. I mean, it was really incredible. That was just fantastic.
And that really, you really couldn't appreciate just how low that helicopter was flying over. I was driving home from the commissary, going up two thirty-five, watching the helicopter go back and forth, back and forth.
Yeah.
Well, they deleted it. It was supposed to be the day before, but it was, it was, the ceiling was too low.
Yes.
So, yeah, it was, it was great fun.
Uh-oh. I don't know. That was it. That was me. There you go. There we go. Everything else is great. We have, so first of all, I mean, it's, it's an incredible event, but that does give you some indication as to what elementary and middle schools look like the week before, the week before, uh,
Christmas.
Christmas. Yeah, I still, I still need my presentation. We have to, I'm done with my part, and now it's Hannah's part. The eighteenth one. You're all a very patient group. I do appreciate it. Is it because you're, you know, you know Santa's coming, so you know you have to be on your very best behavior?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
All right, look at that. So there we are. We only have one full day left, and then we have early dismissal, and then we come back into, into January. Don't even worry about it. The only thing you need to know is that we are off for two entire weeks. Please enjoy yourself, enjoy your children, enjoy the, the warmth of family, and we will be right here on January sixth when we reopen. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Hannah Heisler.
All right. So as we saw on Dr. Smith's calendar, I've been pretty busy as a student member of the board this month.
Oh, my gosh.
We've had a bunch of school visits, and we just hosted last Thursday our student, superintended student leadership, um, general assembly. And so that was planned by myself and then the steering committee members. And that was really just an honor to lead that meeting. We talked about a lot of really great informative things, and I feel like the kids got a lot out of it, especially can, as far as like the bathrooms go.
Oh, yeah.
The bathrooms is, is a major issue throughout the high schools, but I'm glad that we had a productive discussion about it, and everybody seemed to be in agreement. And so we'll take more things back to our schools in the future. For the Saint Mary's Association of Student Councils, we are having our December General Assembly tomorrow.
Oh, my gosh.
Which is very exciting. I unfortunately will not be in attendance, because I'm caroling again for chorus. But everybody else will, and it will be a great assembly, and I did help plan a workshop for it, so that should be fun. For Maryland Association of Student Councils, we have two very exciting things looking up in the future. The first one is Winter Leadership Conference, and that actually highlights the student members of the board statewide. So they're asking me for my headshot and things like that, and are gonna go on the website. And then I've heard talk of a potential student member of the board panel, so that would be really awesome if that happens. And I'll definitely look to present another workshop there as well. And then the big one is the Ocean City Convention, so that's the three-day trip to Ocean City, two nights, and it's with student leaders from all over the state. So it's just a really great experience, and it was super eye-opening for me when I went last year of just how much there is out there in the state and how much other people are doing. And it really inspired me, and I know it's going to inspire all of our delegates this year. Last year, we had delegates from all three schools, and I'm sure we'll have an even bigger turnout this year. So I'm really excited for that. And personal news, I know where I'm going to college. So yeah, that's very exciting.
Are, are you gonna share it with us? Or you're gonna leave us hanging?
Going to White Marsh for college. No, I'm going to Williams College. It's a liberal arts school in Massachusetts.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, for your recommendation.
Oh, my gosh, that's gonna be
And thank you to all of you for being amazing mentors to me. Yeah, I'm really excited. Um, going into my school visits, we have four school visits, um, this, this little section before our board meeting. So a ton of schools, they were all super excited and ramped up before break.
Oh, yeah.
But our first visit was with White Marsh, with that lovely picture. They were very cooperative in the picture.
Yes, they were.
And so they said they are here to learn new things, and they have a ninety-four percent attendance goal. And if they win, they earn PJ Day, a trophy, and most importantly, the Bear Crawl, which is a rap that they perform schoolwide.
Oh, yeah.
They actually performed for me. It was a real treat, and all of them know the rap. It has choreography. So they're really learning that, that rap and that, that dance for, for their attendance, which is super awesome to see. They have new school banners, so they're here for that, and the school banners encourage attendance. And then they're here to see Principal Gannon, who they say is the best principal ever. Actually, the first thing they said when I asked them, what was awesome about their school. So she's pretty great. When I asked them what it meant to be engaged, they said it was to pay attention, to focus, and to volunteer. They said they are especially engaged when they do things like ninety-nine math or bluet. They also love to come to school every morning, because they have morning news with fifth grade anchors every single morning broadcasted. And then kids who are extra engaged and extra involved in school get golden tickets, which every teacher has one to give out. When I asked them what it meant to be approachable, they said nice, friendly with smiles. They said it was important to have approachable teachers who provide them help. They said they become more approachable with their fellow peers when they have lunch bunch. And a big thing, they said, being approachable is to be patient with other people. And I think that's important. They said they love to play games, make new friends, and welcome new students. On the day that we visited, they actually had a brand-new student who was not an English language speaker.
Man who's Chinese.
And they were, they had him on an iPad. He was communicating with the teacher. He was communicating with the students. The students were super welcoming, and I think that's very much the definition of approachable. They also said they have school assemblies with great speakers, and they have a teachers versus fifth grade flag football, which they had before Thanksgiving, and it was no tackle.
No tackle, no tackle.
No tackle.
It was, yes, yes.
Yes. They said that they are renewed every morning when they have soft start mornings. So they have three options to choose from each morning: collaborate, create, or relax. And so that gets them all on the same page and has a nice little warm, welcoming feeling in the morning. They said they're also renewed with school dances. They have an advent calendar in December with activities to do each day. And they also do mindful moments to help themselves calm down if they need a little brain break. And they also do Go Noodle to get brain breaks. So that's super fun. I think I aged myself a little bit talking about Go Noodle. Turns out my favorite Go Noodle is not
It's been retired.
Yeah, it's been retired.
It's been retired.
Yeah. But they said that arts, band, chorus, and strings are the highlight of their day, and they get very renewed from that. They also get renewed from their clubs, such as Running Club, Robotics, and Battle of the, oh, Battle of the Books. Sorry, that's my own bad spelling. They also do Wellness Wednesday, so they emphasize their mental health every Wednesday, making sure that they're all renewed and ready to go to school every day. They have flexible seating. As you can see in the picture, I'm sitting on this weird thing. I was
Bouncy ball.
Yeah, it's a bouncy ball. It was, it was pretty cool. And then they are really excited about fifth grade day with kickball, field day, and food.
Yeah. And just to be, it's Principal Steele. I write, I'm the one that writes the notes, and then I send them to poor Hannah, and my handwriting is obviously terrible.
I'm like, what happened to Joey?
Yeah, no, it's my, it's my handwriting. Well, I'm also trying to hold it. I'm scribbling. Yeah, it's, yeah, I, yeah, I, I could, there could be better penmanship.
All right, next was Benjamin Mannaker. It was the very hot day in the schools.
Oh, yeah.
You guys can remember. So they were a little bit quiet, but I, I think it was because of the heat. My school was about a hundred degrees.
Yep.
That is the unfortunate reality of school being like, of outside being like seventy degrees.
Heat's either on or off once it's turned on. Yep.
Yeah, you can't turn it off.
Yep.
But they were quiet, but we got some good information out of them. They said that they're here to learn, and specifically to have ninety-four percent attendance, which is incentivized with special events and extra recess. They said being engaged is to figure out problems all by yourself without any help. And they said that they are more engaged because they have regional programs such as sail and tide, which help them learn. Their lion time is very engaging, so lion time is reading groups. And then their STEM activities are also engaging, and those are group-based and hands-on, and they said that that helps them be engaged. And they also love math rotations. Those are some of their favorite activities. They said being approachable is not being scared to talk to you and working together, and seeing other people's points of view. So being approachable is collaboration, so they emphasize collaborative work. And then they said being approachable is helping others, and smiling, and being nice. To be renewed, they said every day, being renewed is a fresh start. So if you mess up, you try again next time. So they said that they get renewed by talking with friends, playing sports, doing Go Noodle, watching performances such as concerts. They had a chorus concert coming up when we visited them. And then they also have a drama club that puts on performances that they love to watch. They have the fifth grade field day at the end of the year, which they are very excited about. And they also have lunch bunch, which, which they love. They have a monthly character gathering. So every month, they have one character trait, and they gather, gather for that, which is a great incentive. They love parties in general. They said parties.
Just parties.
Honestly, me too. They also love Battle of the Books and Math Team, the Smeco Math Competition. They said that they got second place last year, so that's pretty awesome. Their favorite field trip was kayaking in Soderly, and they love school dances.
School dances.
All right, so Mechanicsville Elementary School, this was yesterday. When I asked them what it meant to be here, they said it was so that you don't miss anything, which is exactly what it means to be here.
Yeah.
Um, to incentivize being here, they have attendance incentives such as food rewards or dance party. And they especially want to be here, because on Friday, they're gonna have fancy lunch, which every student can go to, and it's organized by the PTO. So that is very exciting. And they said that they love to be here around the holidays, because they have special school lunch food. So shout out to school lunch. They said being engaged is being focused, listening, and asking questions, which you can see in the photo. They're very engaged, raising a lot of hands. They did not like benchmark. They
Yeah, they, yeah, they didn't like benchmark advantage. Of course, there, we, you know, we love it. They, they, they will learn to love it.
They weren't very engaged in that, but
Yes.
But it is what it is. But they were very engaged in the semperal activity where they were making parachutes, which they had a teacher that was gonna drop them off the roof with golf balls, I think, or
Tennis balls.
Tennis? No, no, ping pong balls. Ping pong balls. And they're trying to see if the ping pong balls are gonna crack. So very exciting. They also just did research for an argumentative essay that they're writing, and they loved that research.
Part of benchmark advantage. Yes.
But they loved the research.
Yeah, so there you go.
And they're looking forward to their upcoming fifth grade business fair at the end of the year, where each of them gets to pick an item to sell, and then people pay for it. So it's sort of stimulating an economy, which is a really great thing to do.
Dog biscuits are very good.
They've done dog biscuits, yeah.
They have dog biscuits, and they're, they always sell out.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So I asked them to be, what means to be approachable? They said it was to be kind, to smile, and make eye contact. They said community gathering helps them to be approachable, and they love their minute-to-win-it challenges that they do at community gathering.
I've been there for those. Those are something.
Yeah, those are pretty fun. They also love whole group reading that helps them get connected as a class. And chorus and football kind of bring them together, as well as other activities. And they said being approachable is having trust in other people. And I think that resonated with me. When I asked them what it meant to be renewed, they said it was to become a new person and to reinvent yourself. So they said if they're having a bad day in school, they can always talk to a teacher or a guidance counselor. Or if they're having a bad day, it always turns around with recess and lunch. Recently, they've been making Christmas cards, and that's helped them turn their frown upside down. Some other fun things that they're looking forward to are the fifth grade versus staff kickball game, which they're gonna win this year.
They said they're gonna win.
They said in value that they're going to win this year.
Yep.
They're also excited for fifth grade fun day. And then they said that the best thing about the school was the empathy of the students, which is awesome to hear. And that they said that, uh, sorry, Mechanicsville Elementary School is safe and calm, and they love that.
I love that. We all
All right, so Town Creek, this was, this was today, and this is our, our first time that a school has come prepared with their top ten.
Oh, yeah.
Every, every school visit, I asked them, what's your top ten things about your school? And they, they answered the questions, but they, they came prepared. They had it printed out ahead of time, their top ten things. They had a list of the things that we need to do better for their school, which was super awesome. They were super engaged. They actually brought me a little journal that says Town Creek Elementary.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, very nice. So I did my normal spiel of asking them what it means to be here, engaged, approachable, and renewed. And they said to be here is to be physically pren, uh, present. And they do competitions and announcements for attendance. And then they're also doing Fun Friday, this Friday, so they're all gonna come to school for that.
Good.
They said that being engaged is working with teachers and classmates to use active listening and not growling at other people, so they don't wanna listen to you. So that was very important. They said they were engaged when they did activities like Battleship Number Line, which sounds pretty fun.
Yep.
They love the game Prodigy for ELA and math. And then Word War was super interesting, that they pick vocabulary words from the books that they're reading, and they put the, um, some of the most challenging ones on the board. And then once the class says them enough as words, then they get an incentive. So they were, they were really struggling today to fit in blithe to their, to their sentences, but I think one of the kids succeeded.
Yeah.
So it was pretty exciting to see. For being approachable, they said being approachable was being friendly, smiling, and understanding. And they have an activity called Positive Peers, which is after every lesson. They pick two people to praise each other. So that's really just practicing how to, how to be a good person, how to be approachable. So that's super awesome that they're doing that. And then they said they get renewed by brain breaks, whole group reading, and then after tests, they just feel a weight off their shoulders and like they're ready to learn something new again. So it's definitely being renewed. So Colin presented Town Creek Elementary School's top ten. So their top ten things were changing classes, their music programs, their school breakfast, the fact that they are privileged to have laptops, their teachers, their new Gaga ball pit sponsored by the PTO.
Yes.
The reusable water bottle fillers, the no cellphone policy. And the Terrapin Trail, as well as balance of time between classes. And then they gave us a list of homework assignments.
Yeah, Colin gave the top ten and then Kurt gave us the, what we should do differently and be better.
Yeah, so they had it, they had it prepared, who was, who was saying what. Um, but our, our homework is that they want more safety staff for around the school, um, because they only have one administrator, so they need more safety staff. Um, they also want more time for specials because they love them and more semperal activities. Um, they also want more playground equipment, um, because the playground right now has too much mulch on it. So the, their kids are too tall for the monkey bars and there's mulch on the slides. So they, they want more, more playground equipment, um, and they want more things to be able to do. Uh, they also want more vegetarian school lunch options with new fresh vegetable options. And they especially want a salad bar with croutons. Which is a big thing.
Kurt had, Kurt had quite the list. That was good. I will tell you, Ms. Heisler, you have been very, very busy. Over the last two weeks, we have spent much time together and we have seen a lot of things that are going on in St. Mary's County public schools. And it, it's been, it's been a good, it's been a good way to finish twenty twenty-four. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Very nice. And with that.
Alright, no revisions, public hearing, consent agenda. So, and at this point, if anyone wants to leave, you are more than welcome.
You've heard the good news.
Heard the good news, so, um, and we're good, as they go forward and read the consent agenda, you are more than welcome to exit.
Do we have public comments?
And thank you very much for being here tonight.
Um, today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for December fourth, twenty twenty-four. Personnel, teachers, personnel, administrative and supervisory, and Department of Operations refuse removal and recycling services. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We have one action item tonight, which, uh, Dr. Kelly Hall, I saw her somewhere. I did see her somewhere.
Slumton Elementary School, they all, they, they have a moment, they all get together.
For the charter school renewal.
I wish you the best of luck with the computer because I have no idea what I've done.
That gives me anxiety.
I, yes, yes. We need go noodle and some brain breaks.
Or Ms. Funia, you can just fly solo there with this. Charter school renewal.
If the go noodle comes up, we'll just, we'll just dance.
So how's everybody doing? How's your, uh?
Great, and you?
Christmas shopping going well? I have a lot to do.
Do we see Dr. Hall? Well, we have Tammy fill, we can have Ms. McCourt fill.
At least go through the initial slide.
Sure. So, you, you know, we're here tonight, this is kind of a multipurpose, um, experience for us. Um, every year or annually, we are to come to for the board and just share our own self-evaluation. Um, this year it comes along with a charter renewal, so every five years we go through this process.
I thought we had a break.
Um, yeah, so the, so that's where we are. Um, self-assessment, yeah, charter renewal, yeah. Okay. So good evening. I apologize for my tardiness. Um, so I think Mrs., um, we have with us the education director, Ms. Angela Funia, or I'm sorry, Ms. Sandy Embry Alley and the charter director, Ms. Angela Funia. We also have with us, did you already do this?
Nope.
The chairman of the Charter School Alliance, Dr. Kevin Emerson, he's sitting right there. Alright, so what we're gonna do tonight, in tonight's presentation, according to our policy and regulation, we're gonna do, share the results of the Chesapeake Public Charter School and the Alliance self-assessment. Then we're gonna share the, um, their evaluation that the school system has conducted. And then we'll do a presentation of the new contract and Deputy Superintendent McCourt will be here to help us with walking through the money. Okay, so on June twelfth, as a reminder, the Board of Education approved an extension of the existing contract that ended on June thirtieth to allow ample time for the new contract negotiations, given the changes um, with the blueprint for Maryland's future. So a little bit about the self-assessment, um, what is required. So Chesapeake Public Charter School and the Alliance complete a self-assessment annually. And they monitor of the, the components of the school, including their commitment and progress with meeting the school's charter mission, vision and adhering, adhering to the charter agreement. The lottery process and enrollment, staffing and credentialing, their facility. The financial audit that's conducted by Asking and Asking and Associates, which is a very reputable accounting firm. Their student data for achievement and also attendance. And then they report that status to the school system via the required appointed liaison, who is me, and other central office staff periodically. Okay. So, Dr. Emerson, if you would trade places with Mrs. Embry Alley for just a minute, thank you for being here this evening. If you would speak about the self-assessment and the Alliance.
Sure. Uh, thank you for having me today, guys. Um, as you know, the Alliance is a nonprofit organization that governs, uh, the Chesapeake Charter School and holds the charter agreement. In addition to that, we own the building and manage that facility and keep it operating sufficiently for it to serve its function to our students. Um, we have a governing board that is responsible for ensuring provisions of the charter agreement are being fulfilled to the best of our ability. Um, and we focus a lot of time on, uh, public outreach, uh, in, in increasing public awareness of our school and what it does and how it operates. Um, and we also oversee the, the committee structure that helps the school run day to day. Uh, this lists some of our primary committees, fundraising, communication, engagement, facilities and finance, among others. I will say that over the last year or two, these committees have really come together and are doing some really great things. And we're super excited to be supporting them, to really help out the day-to-day operations with the school.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, Ms. Funia is gonna just talk about the, a self-assessment and the unique program that is required with the, the charter school.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so some of you have been here for a long time, so you, you know this spiel, but some of you are brand new, so it's good to have you, welcome. Um, so some of the things that make us unique, um, have just been our approach to focusing in on the whole child. Um, making sure that our students are healthy, safe, engaged, supported and challenged. And that is kind of like, like the overarching umbrella um, of our philosophy. We do a lot of project-based learning. Um, we're always looking to integrate when we can in order to provide context for our students. Um, we keep our class sizes small. That was part of our charter agreement. Um, we are a K to eight school, which is a great thing and it also brings some challenges to us. Um, we are very much a community school. It's fun to hear when you go to other schools and they talk about community gathering, cause that was something that had originated with our school and has kind of spread out into the community, which is kind of the point of charter schools, right? We're supposed to be, um, trying some new things and, and then sharing that. And when it works well, it kind of goes out into the community, just like our standards-based report cards. So it's excellent. Um, we have a, we're an MTSS school, so we focus on, you know, some of those social foundations and supports that our students need. Um, we also have our students out in the field a lot. We believe strongly that learning takes place outside the four walls. And so we encourage them to go out and to experience, um, just some different programs, both here in our area as well as in the Chesapeake Bay region. Um, one of our biggest things as well is our year-round calendar. We generally start about two to three weeks before traditional schools do, so our students have a compressed summer break. Um, and we end usually about mid-June. So this is just a snapshot of our demographics this year. Um, we are fully enrolled at five hundred and forty students. We are done with any kind of expansion. We will always be a K to eight school. We will never be a high school. Um, we have eighteen K to five classrooms and nine middle school classrooms total. Um, you can see a breakdown of our ethnic demographics on the screen there. Um, one of the things to make note of is our economically disadvantaged percentages. We have worked hard to wait our lottery and to see those numbers increase. When we started that process about five years ago, um, we were at seven percent. So even with COVID thrown in there, we're pretty excited to see that this process is, is continuing to, um, increase that demographic for us. Um, our special education students, um, this year we're about nine percent. We have about six percent of our students who have five oh four plans. As I said before, our class sizes, we keep them small. It's about twenty-one to one. Sometimes that looks like, uh, a little different because our kindergarten, we only have room for fifty-four kids. And then we have to sprinkle the rest out into the other classes. Uh, we have sixty-five staff members. All of our teachers are MSDU credentialed and St. Mary's County Public School employees. Uh, this is our open season for our enrollment. So this is our, our lottery time. Um, we open the application period on December one. It runs through the whole month. Um, it is an online platform. Parents are able to go in and set up their account. Um, this year we have, uh, two hundred and ninety-one so far to date on, in our lottery. But in general, we carry anywhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty students on our waitlist once we're done with pulling our students in. Um, whether it's kindergarten in January or, uh, some of the older grades, which might come later in June. We do wait that lottery for economically disadvantaged. As I said, currently we're at sub-twenty-seven percent. But you can, we can see that that is kind of shooting up by looking at the individual grade levels. So we can see that we're closer to thirty percent K to five and that's when we started waiting the lottery. Um, to date, like I said, we have ni- two hundred and ninety-one applicants. We generally see the most applicants in kindergarten and sixth grade. So to date, we have a hundred and seventeen kindergarten applications, um, and thirty-eight sixth grade applications. And our highest volume by zip code is always in that Lexington Park, Great Mills area. Although we do have kind of a handful of, um, applications coming in from California, Leonardtown and Pax and Hollywood. So right now, that's where we're at. Okay.
Mrs. Embry Alley, the education director.
Yeah, staffing. So we're glad that our staffing has stabilized over the past couple of years. We had three new teachers um, for this current school year. We do, um, believe that some of the things that we have put in place, including increasing two-way communication, um, offering anonymous surveys three or four times a year, um, with the focus on communication and support. What we can do as administrators to support our staff more, what are their needs? How, um, we can work together to make it a good culture for our school. Um, we do, um, teacher voice and choice and professional development. So we definitely look at our data to see where professional development lies. And then we rely heavily on feedback from teachers about what they need, um, to support, um, their day-to-day jobs. Um, attendance. So we are at ninety-four percent, which is the recommendation for the state. We are always looking at ways to increase student attendance. You know, we want everybody at school every day. So we do send home monthly letters. We do automated call-outs. Um, we have classroom teachers contact the parents to figure out what's going on with the students. We might have the nurse. We have a school counselor that works with, um, local experts and she has monthly tool talks on a variety of topics that support parents. It takes place after school. So it might be something as simple as, um, ways to establish good bedtime routines. Um, it could also be topics about dealing with an adolescent and things that arise when you have an adolescent. So a lot of these topics, um, support the families and then help students want to come to school. So we've seen a lot of promise in that area too. So the next, um, two slides are our, um, assessment data, our MCAP data from this past spring for grades three to eight. Um, as we have historically performed, um, you will see the column in every grade level. On the left side is Maryland. The column in the middle is St. Mary's County Public Schools as a whole. And then we are on the right-hand side, um, in English Language Arts in grades three through eight. We perform as well as, and in some cases, um, better than, um, the rest of the county and the school system. You know, we attribute a lot of that, again, to the professional development in the area of reading, um, with our classroom teachers, as well as targeted cross-curricular focus on reading and the variety of content areas and really buil- building our projects, um, to focus in those areas. So the scores reflect it. Um, the next two slides are three through eight, um, and those are our math scores for this past spring. Three through six appears very similar to the ELA. Um, we perform as well as, um, and in some cases better than the rest of the county and the school system. There's a slight dip in seventh grade. Um, but in analyzing that data, those students did grow nine proficiency points from the year prior. So while it's not where we wanted it to be, it was great to see that growth. And then when students get into eighth grade, they split up. So you have some students that are in, um, eighth grade math and then others that are in algebra. So, um, yeah, that's an, definitely in math is an area of focus for us, for our school improvement plan. You know, going back to the root causes and, and, and making adjustments to instruction along the way.
Okay, thank you. So now we move into their evaluation. So there is oversight that is required with the autonomy that comes with the provision in the law that allows them to have a charter school. So in terms of their performance reporting timeline, they are compliant. There are self-assessment, which you can see they've done a comprehensive job and we've talked about all of that. Um, also on the Maryland report card, Chesapeake Public Charter School is a four-star school. They exceed the state and they're performing on par with other high achieving schools in St. Mary's County. Um, we meet monthly, so they have a meeting with me monthly. There is the list of the dates and times. Um, they are, we are required to have one site visit a year. We far exceed that and then there are other directors, content supervisors, other staff, Mrs. McCourt, that is meeting with them throughout the year. So there's a lot of oversight. So in reviewing all of the data that they presented, um, their governance and management requirements have been met. Their achievement is fully compliant with the state-required assessment. Their staffing, all full-time staff are St. Mary's County public and, im- public school employees. They have a low attrition rate. They're all vetted through our human resources office. The facility is owned by CCSA. It's compliant. Its inspections are up to date. They have a current five oh one C three status. With their finance, they were required to have an audit, um, one small tiny blip without audit. So there were no fiduciary concerns, but there was an issue with their internal control. Um, they, um, have to have an MOU conflict of interest on file for every member of their executive board. And they had some, but not all. And Asking and Asking noticed that. Really, when they sat down and talked about it, the meetings were done sort of as a hybrid, in-person and virtual. And some of the virtual people did not follow up. So what do we do when something like that happens? We put a corrective action plan in place. So there is a written corrective action plan. Those meetings are gonna move to in-person. So that next year, when Asking and Asking says, "We need to see this," they'll have all of it. So really not a, not a game changer, but something to just put a little more attention to the detail. CP, CPCS is a four-star school, so they are in good standing. Here are some examples of the documents that we asked to see, like their five oh one three C status. Give us the audit report that the Alliance goes through. That is shared with the board. And then we move into the contract. So there are just some highlights for you to begin with. So this contract that is proposed for your consideration includes the extension. So it would be from September, or July one of twenty-four, so it's, we're, because we extended, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. There's some additional clarity of procedural language for special education. Their insurance requirements were updated. There's a procedure. There's a procedure for children of Chesapeake Public Charter School staff with a lottery priority. That language was just tightened up to keep everybody with the same understanding. There was a lot of discussion about blueprint funding and then staffing placement clarification. Okay, so with that, I'm going to ask Mrs. McCourt to trade places with me, and she will speak to the nuances of the funding.
So we did, in fact, spend an extensive amount of time talking about the funding on both sides, and it's predominantly as a result of all the new blueprint and dates and ensuring that we're in compliance on both sides. So as Dr. Hall mentioned, this is retroactive to July first of twenty-twenty-four and will extend through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-nine. There are three components of the new funding formula in the proposed document, and that is to include the blueprint funding following the student, based on the student demographics, and based on the per pupil allocation amounts as per statute. So that includes foundation funding, compensatory education funds, EL funds, special education funds. It also includes a component within the multi-part funding calculation to address allocation of other funds. This can include funding in excess of foundation that the county commissioners provide to us. It includes our federal impact aid monies, and it includes our transition monies for blueprint funding, things that are not tied to student demographics. And that funding allocation, that component of the formula is based on the percentage of the charter school students as a percentage of the total St. Mary's County Public School students, so that's three point seventeen percent. And then the final component that led to us extensive amount of conversation was the administrative fee. So that administrative fee is currently two percent. Under the blueprint, we have to have a requirement to fund at least seventy-five percent of the blueprint fund at the school level. So the funding formula for twenty-twenty-six, as it currently stands, which may or may not change during the General Assembly, is nine thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars per student for foundation funding for five hundred and forty students. And the funding for FY twenty, FY twenty-six is based on our current year's student count. Compensatory education funding per student, seven thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars per student for one hundred and forty-four students, based on the charter school's demographics. Special education, nine thousand five hundred and three dollars per student for forty-nine students. ELL funding, nine thousand forty-one dollars per student for two students. Transitional supplemental instruction funding of three hundred and fifty-six dollars per student for four, one hundred and four students. And then we also receive ten thousand dollars for every NBC-certified teacher, and we currently have four teachers at the charter school. Now, these dollar amounts are the state and local contribution per pupil allocation. The per-rated funding allocation that I mentioned earlier at the three point seventeen percent is based on a variety of factors. So it's a state and local funding in excess of the required blueprint funds. We have the federal funds of two point six million dollars. We have other miscellaneous funds of one point one million dollars. And this excludes revenues that we receive that are not applicable to the charter school, such as federal NJRTC monies that we receive. And then we subtract out district-wide costs, such as the Affordable Care Act amount of eighteen thousand dollars, certification fees of seven thousand dollars, employee assistant program of twenty-five thousand dollars, flexible spending of ten thousand dollars, the retiree health insurance of twelve point eight million dollars, an OPEB contribution of two million dollars, and the teacher's retirement pension plan of seven point four million dollars. So after we net all of that, the charter school received three point seventeen percent of that net amount. And these are the estimated amounts for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. The actual amounts may certainly very well change. When we dove into the administrative fee, we truly wanted to understand what costs were being borne and that were unique costs being borne by the charter school and what costs were being borne by the school district on behalf of the charter school as indirect costs. So some of the detailed operational costs that were unique to the charter school included their mortgage and reserve payment, their property manager, building maintenance, whereas we have CIP fund, they bear their own costs of maintaining the building, HVAC costs, ripping costs, and so on. They have their own insurance costs. They certainly have their own audit costs with Askey and Askey, and transportation. So for the school district as a whole, we don't recognize those costs at the school level, however, the charter school does. Those unique charter school costs totaled just over a million dollars in the current fiscal year's budget. Then we looked at district-wide costs that were bearing on behalf of all schools to include the charter school, and those costs include the offices and superintendent, HR office support, the IT department, fiscal services, instructions, special education, student services, safety and security, transportation office, and then assessment and accountability, to name a few, as well as computer software that is utilized system-wide but not defined and tied to a student demographic count. So our e-finance system, e-school, Microsoft Cloud Backup and Security Software, as well as contracted services, our background checks, severe weather detection, and state mandated testing. And our per-rated costs associated with all of those agreed-upon detailed lists is at the three point seventeen percent, totals five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars based on our current year costs. Currently, at the two percent, the administrative fee equals one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. So that would be a fairly steep delta for the charter school to bear that increase in one fiscal year. So what we did was we took a step back, and we said, currently, how much of the blueprint funds are being recognized across the school district on average? And ninety-three percent, not the state mandate of seventy-five percent, but we as a school district are recognizing ninety-three percent of our blueprint funds at the school level. So that means that seven percent is being held back and recognized for district-wide costs. So that is what we're proposing for the charter school. But starting at their current level of two percent and recognizing an increase to four percent in fiscal twenty-six or three hundred thousand dollars based on our estimated budget for next year, in fiscal year twenty-seven, recognizing a one percentage point increase to five percent or three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar estimate, in FY twenty-eight, six percent or four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then getting to seven percent by the end of this contract term in fiscal twenty-twenty-nine, or an estimate based on today's dollars of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And I keep reemphasizing that this is an estimate based on today's dollars because I don't want someone looking at this presentation a year from now and saying, "But you said." So these are all subject to change, but the percentages are concrete.
Okay, thank you. So before we go any further, are there any questions?
On slide twenty-three, where it says the two percent to four percent to five percent to six percent, is that money that the charter school is paying or that the district is paying?
Those are the monies that are being withheld for the district, so being withheld from the per pupil allocation formula for the district to use for the indirect costs on behalf of the charter.
Oh, thank you.
So what we prepared for you was a hard copy of the complete contract, and also you received it electronically. We thought a hard copy would be easier for you to review. I just want to publicly thank Melissa Evans and also Martina Green, my administrative assistant. Because Melissa put it together, Martina served as her backup reader to make sure that the copy was clean and good to go. So thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Martina. So the action that we are requesting is that the Board of Education approve the agenda item as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the charter agreement between the Board of Education of St. Mary's County and Chesapeake Charter School Alliance, LTD, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any more discussion or questions on this?
Nope.
Nope, okay. May I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I believe that Dr. Smith has said we'll take a break and.
Yeah, we'll take a little break. We'll call at the table. We'll do an official signing. We'll gather around. We'll take some pictures. It'll look very nice.
Next up, we have Maryland Report Card, Ms. Burr.
Hello.
So, we are going to give you some information tonight about the Maryland School Report Card. And we're going to start out with just a basic overview. The URL is mdreportcard.org. And if you look at the center right of the screen there, if you look up our county as a whole, that is St. Mary's County Schools at the glance, and you'll see there were two circles that say NA, and that's because the state has not released that data yet. So, we can't speak to those points because the data hasn't been released. And then at the bottom left is what you see when you go to the website. You can either pick to view by the district, or you can pick to look at a specific school. Maryland School Report Card is, in essence, an accountability system. And it's an accountability system which uses a variety of indicators which vary by grade span, and it's based on a total possible points of 100. Those points are divided by the points earned, or divided by the total points possible, and not every school can get a total points possible of 100, because sometimes there's some demographic differences that wouldn't yield 100 total. But you divide the points earned by the points possible, come up with a percentage point, and then that percentage point is then translated into a star rating based on the chart that is on the right side of the slide there. And when you look at a specific school, we've kind of highlighted where you go to find these aspects. You see that each indicator is broken down into categories, and there are points possible and points earned for each category within an indicator. And then at the bottom center is the fraction, which is then translated into a percentage. And then that percentage is correlated with a star rating, which is the top, in the top right corner of the screen.
The slide shows kind of longitudinal data. Back in 2019, kind of, we had the star ratings. Then the pandemics, we just like to show kind of through the years from school year '22 to '24. The left side shows Maryland's star ratings from five stars to one star, and then SMCPS. So, between school year '23 and '24, little movement, one star improvement, one star below, but we've pretty much held our ground as a system. This, just St. Mary's County, between elementary, middle, and high are four kind of main categories or indicators: academic achievement, academic progress, our English language proficiency, and school quality indicators. Same as in the slide before, we've definitely held ground and improved in some instances.
And while we presented before on different academic indicators, because those had been previously released, a lot of the culture and climate information was embargoed until December, and one of those aspects of culture and climate comes from the school survey. The school survey is completed by students and educators in every building between February and April of each year, and there are 10 ratings in four different areas. The areas are community, environment, relationships, and safety. And then this information, you can find on every school's page within the Maryland School Report Card, and it is worth 10 points of the school quality and student success measure. So, those 10 points are divided, seven points for the student responses, and three points for the educator responses.
One of our prime directives, obviously, with SMCPS is to have students in the school building. With Maryland Report Card and the accountability system, they do take into consideration chronic absentee. It's presented as the percent of students not chronically absent. But for a student to be considered chronically absent, in summary, if the student, whether it is an excused absence or unexcused, if they're not physically in the building, that is considered an absence. If a student, normally it's about 10%, on average, everything being equal, if the student's with us for 180 days, about, it averages about two days a month. It's also part of the, we had said, a part of the quality, school quality and success.
So, that, I mean, that is an important point, because everybody's talking about chronic absentee, you're chronically absent, you're chronically absent. You're present 90% of the time, and you're only absent 10% of the time. So, if you have a child, and your child got sick in a month, and they were out of school for three days, that would be considered chronically absent for the month. I'm not saying it's not the right measure. I mean, I think that it's incredibly important to tell everybody that we need to have kids in school every single day, but one could argue that a child, for whatever reason, is absent from school two times in a month, whether or not that would constitute being a chronically absent individual. The, we used to, it used to be calculated much differently, and it used to be a threshold of 25 days, and there was consideration for what was lawful or unlawful. There was, there was a lot more nuance to this measure before how it is currently being calculated. And currently being calculated is, if you miss two days out of the month, you're considered chronically absent overall.
So, I have a question, since we're on the subject. So, I wonder if a student isn't able to come to school for health reasons, like there, I was thinking of that one lady that came and spoke in the beginning. There's leave, there's some leeway.
That child would be considered chronically absent.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. There isn't, there, it is a, it is a straight calculation. If you are absent eight, 18 days out of 180, then you are considered chronically absent.
No exceptions.
No, it's just a straight number. They don't, they're not interested in the story behind it.
Nope, not at all.
No.
My daughter was absent for surgery, third grade. I got letters from everywhere. I got letters from SMCPS, I got letters from the state, I got everything. She could not physically attend school.
Yes, I remember.
Didn't matter.
You were not satisfied by that, I remember.
It was not.
Yes, yes.
We alerted the school ahead of time that she would be absent. Reasons why, nope, didn't care.
Yes. It is, it is.
It's not that the school didn't care.
No, the law didn't care, right.
The law didn't care.
Well, and honestly, and if anyone's, if anyone's following the, the stories in the Baltimore Sun about the truancy cases within Baltimore City Public Schools, and the interviews with the families and the challenges that they face.
With transportation.
With transportation, and, you know, and jobs, and the, it is, it is just a tough, tough thing to overcome.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what makes St. Mary's County great.
Oh, we're, you know, we're plugging along. So, sorry.
Nope.
Continue.
This last slide here for chronic absentee, just kind of showing between elementary, middle, and high from school year '23 to '24, we are seeing improvement in that rate of students not chronically absent. Also, for assessment accountability, each month, we provide schools with attendance rates on all currently active students, and also to make sure that we indicate whether it's at that 10% or higher. So, this helps schools, instead of having to kind of dig for information, or if they have concerns, they can look specifically there kind of easily. Also, the information can be broken down to highlight student groups or demographics that the school is focused on for their school improvement plan. For example, if the school is really focused on students with disabilities, they can look to see at that whole population, and then also to see what that kind of chronic absentee rate is. And the next steps for improvement and goal setting, a lot of these Stephanie just touched on, that include regular school data meetings to review not only academic progress, but also monthly attendance data, including chronic absenteeism. And the schools themselves, a lot of them are currently conducting interim surveys of students and staff to assess culture and climate, so that they can make necessary adjustments throughout the school year. The schools are also focusing on target student groups for all of these subcategories. If they decide to focus on their special education students, or their English language learners, or any other subgroup, we are able to provide them breakdown data so that they can look at the stats for those specific subgroups of students. And then the high schools are actively monitoring progress towards successful course completion with an emphasis on what the blueprint calls on track for ninth grade. And the on track for ninth grade definition now includes not chronically absent. So, even if a student has really good grades and performance across all other categories, that attendance can deem them not chron, not on track. So, that, that's another reason that the schools are monitoring all of their data, not just academics.
So, if your child has less than a 90% attendance rate, they are not going to graduate from high school, according to the blueprint MSD data gathering. And it's, and it's a go, no go. So, like, again, years past, you used to be, we wanted you to have a 94% attendance rate, and then they disaggregated it, and if you didn't get there, they took a look at what your percentage was, and then they calculated that, so, you know, you, you would have a, you'd be where, now it's like you are either, either you, you are above a 90%, or you're below, and you'd get no partial credit, and it just, and, and that's that. There's, the assessment systems and the accountability measures are all being reviewed at the state level by the new superintendent, Carrie Wright. And I definitely think that as we unpack this, we're going to see that probably there's going to be modifications to the way in which it's calculated.
I certainly hope so. You know, we tell parents, if your child has a fever, or if your child has certain symptoms, keep them home. But the state is turning around and saying, no, send them to school anyway.
Wow.
In essence, it's, especially if you have a child who's going into high school or in a high school, the threat of not graduating versus, okay, well, if you've got to throw up, run to the bathroom quick.
Well, if they, if they were, instead of calling it chronically absent, they could have two categories: students who have above 90% attendance, and students who have below 90% attendance. And I think that would be a lot more clear, and I think that might help people spend a little less time, you know, talking about chronically absent. People are assuming those, that those are students who haven't been to school for 60, 70, 80 days, and that might not be the case. So.
Any other questions? Anyone?
Yeah, no questions. I would just similarly like to see maybe differences in levels of chronic absenteeism, because I know myself, I definitely don't have a 90% acceptance.
Yeah, because, but that's my fault, really. I mean.
Mine's 20% this week, so.
Yeah.
I mean, according to the state, I'm chronically absent, but I feel like I'm keeping up with all my work, so I, I think that there's a lot of students like me, or who are sick, that it just stinks to see them labeled as chronically absent from the state, so I would definitely like to see changes in the future.
The ninth grade tracker is, that's a real challenge to have that put in there as well, because we have kids that are academically absolutely on track and doing what they're supposed to be doing, and then they might not be at school 90% of their, you know, that's a, it's a real issue, so.
Could you explain to me, if a student's identified as chronically absent, what's the process for SMCPS? What do they do?
So, there's no consequence necessarily for the child, other than the fact that they will not be considered college and career ready, which means that ultimately, if we were to follow the, I don't, we don't, we don't want to go there. Okay, great.
No, it's just, they'd still be college and career ready with the CCRC standard.
Yeah, oh, yes. Yes, but they're not considered on track for the purposes of our tracking, our stars.
For ninth, first time ninth graders, yes.
The, the consequence falls mostly on the schools and the school accountability measure and star ratings.
Okay, because the, the only reason I ask is that I dug into the data a little bit, you know, into elementary schools, and something that concerns me is in, like, Lexington Park Elementary School.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, there's a higher absenteeism rate, and then I have 8.7% of students proficient in mathematics.
Without a doubt, there is a correlation.
So, is, is there anything that SMCPS is doing to try to, you know, boost that up, boost that improvement?
Well, and one of our, one of our experts here at the, at the dais here would be Ms. Hannah Heisler. As we go and visit each one of the schools, we talk about SMCPS, we hear, H, being here is the most important thing, and so, we chronicle and talk to every single one of the students as far as what is the school doing to make sure that they understand that the attendance expectation is 94%? How are they, how are they monitoring? How are they tracking? How are they rewarding? How are they incentivizing kids' attendance? How are they making things more engagement? There's, there's a great many things that we are doing. At the end of the day, it's, we are still trying to work through and reinforce with parents how essential it is that children come to school.
So, if a student misses so many days of school, they get a letter in the mail?
Oh, absolutely. Well, they'll, they'll be contacted multiple times by the school.
As you can tell, I, I always attended school, never had an absence.
Fantastic, of course. Me, me too.
Yeah.
Absolutely, the school follows up and, and tracks all the way through. And ultimately, if somebody is so chronically absent that, that it's impacting their academic achievement, then it comes back around to the school. We work through student services, we have a pupil services team, things like that, where we consider, you know, how, how to help the family get back on track and get the child to school.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Yes.
No other questions? Thank you, Mary.
No, thank you for bringing this information forward and letting us know what's being done to address the issues of chronic absenteeism at the schools.
I will just say that I hope that the state really takes a serious look at this and, and makes the changes needed. We all support accountability, but, but that accountability has to really be understanding of all of the different factors, and right now, that's not going on. And so, I applaud Dr. Wright for saying that she wants to, to take a, a good look at this, and given that we are staring down the end of the contract for the standardized testing and how that will change, I will say, you know, certainly welcome, but it's kind of same old, same old. I bet every five years, five or six years, oh, new state superintendent, let's have a different test, let's do this different. When are we ever going to find what's right and stick with it? I was recently over in Virginia at the high school I graduated from. 65 countries represented 63 different languages spoken, and yet their test scores are out of sight. And my conversation with the principal was, we've got our standards, standards of learning, we know what we're doing, we know what these kids need, and we know how to provide it. Big difference. If, if that high school can do the kind of work that they're doing, and, and with the challenges they face, there's absolutely no reason why every school in Maryland can't follow suit, if the state will get their ducks in a row and leave them there. So, thank you for letting me get on my soapbox.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, the last two items are Ms. McCord.
Good evening. So, before you, we have the fiscal year '25 financials as of November 30th. We have total revenues of received year-to-date up $150 million, a balance against the budget of $142.5 million, and we are ahead of target, representing 51% of the revenues received as of the end of November. On the expenditure side, we have total expenditures plus encumbrances of $270.6 million, available balance unencumbered or unexpended of $21.9 million, representing 92.5% of our budget is committed year-to-date. Are there any questions? There are no areas of concern.
No, thank you for compiling all this data. Anyone?
No.
All right. Thank you. On to the next item, the budget preview.
So, that was FY '25. Now, we'll move into FY '26. So, when we look at the fiscal 2026 budget, the first thing we need to do is look at where our, our enrollment is. The enrollment is one component of the basis of the calculation, the other component is what comes out of the General Assembly, what is defined in law for per pupil allocation basis. Our enrollment across the board has decreased. In elementary school, it is a decrease of 155 students. If you look at kindergarten, we're currently at 1,103 students. However, looking at fifth grade, for example, it was, or it is, 1,271 students. So, certainly, our, our entering kindergartners are declining. For middle school, we've recognized a decline of 64 students, and then for high school, a decline of 105 students. So, if you're looking at our seniors, our senior class this year is 1,319 students as compared to our entering kindergartners at 1,100 students. That certainly was not anticipated coming into the current year. When we're looking at our student enrollment and funding, we look at our rolling average or our greater, of the rolling average or, or our current year's numbers. So, looking back to 2021, we had 16,714 students, that increased by 139 students in, in 2022 to 16,853, but then we decreased last school year to 16,699 by 154 students. The three-year rolling average was larger at 16,755 students than last school year's student count of 16,699. Therefore, the 16,755, the three-year rolling average became the basis for our per pupil allocation of funding at both the state and local levels. The current school year's total enrollment dropped by 329 students to 16,370. Therefore, our three-year rolling average at 16,640 is greater than our September 30th enrollment of 16,370. However, it is still a decline, so our three-year rolling average decline is 114 students less. 16,640 becomes our new official enrollment number for purposes of the calculation. When we're looking at the blueprint funding formula, components of our funding for next school year, it is based on not only student enrollment, but also the demographics. So, at this point in time, because we don't know what's going to come out of the General Assembly, what is currently in statute for foundation funding is for fiscal 2026 is $9,226 per child, which represents a 5% increase. That 5% increase also includes $163 for our collaborative planning time, and that's really important to note, because otherwise, we would have received $9,058. Also included in that number is our workforce development monies of $64. And it's particularly important to note, because there is conversation that that money, the collaborative planning money, may not come to fruition next fiscal year. However, it is embedded in our current projections, because it currently is in statute. We have an increase in compensatory education monies of 4% to $7,842. While that's great that that represents an increase, we did recognize a slight decrease in the number of FARMs students in the current school year. However, we certainly don't believe that that's representative of the county as a whole, so we're continuing to encourage our principals to get in touch, and our counselors to get in touch with families to submit their FARMs applications. Pre-K is slated to increase by 11% to $14,473. ELL funding is slated to increase by 1% to $9,041. Special education, an increase of 9% to $9,503. Transitional supplemental instruction is slated to decrease by 32% to $356, and fiscal year 2026 is the last year of the transitional supplemental instruction monies. Career, college and career ready monies are slated to increase by 3% to $586. Now, please understand that these numbers presented on this, on the slide, are the state and local monies combined on a per pupil allocation basis. So, only a component of that will be paid by the state. So only a component of that, um, will be paid by the state, and then there's the, uh, local match that is wealth equalized. It's currently approximately fifty percent on both sides. The wealth equalized amount, um, vary from year to year, um, depending on the demographics of, I'm sorry, depending on the wealth of our county as compared to the rest of the state. And the wealth is based on our net taxable assessment as well as our net taxable income. So we, when we compile that information for the state funding, we're looking at an increase from eighty-five million to eighty-eight point two million dollars for foundation funding of two point eight million dollar increase. Our transition grant monies are, uh, set to decline by six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. An increase in special education funding is six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. An increase to transportation funding of two hundred and twen- two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Compensatory education monies, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar increase. Special education tuition, two hundred thousand dollar increase. ELL funding, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase. Career ladder funding, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar increase. Full day pre-K, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar increase. Post-college and career-ready monies, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollar increase. A decrease in the transitional supplemental instruction monies of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. A decrease in the blueprint coordinating funds of eight thousand dollars, and a decrease in the comparable wage index monies of twenty-seven thousand dollars. An overall increase anticipated at this point in time, based on current legislation, of four point three million dollars. However, if our student enrollment had been maintained at last year's numbers, that would have actually been an additional one point eight million dollars above that four point three million dollars. So in state aid funds, to recognize an additional six point one million dollars in fiscal twenty twenty-six.
Is the three-year rolling average, is it a percentage, like a certain percent every year?
No.
Okay, so that changes two.
Um, we take the, an average of the, the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four actual enrollment numbers, so the six thou- sixteen thousand eight fifty-three, sixteen thousand six ninety-nine, and sixteen thousand three seventy, on an average, gives you the sixteen thousand six forty.
Okay, okay, gotcha, thank you. And then, can, the transition grant, can you explain that again? What is that? The transcrish- oh, it's on numbers slide seven.
Yes. The transition grant versus the transitional supplemental instruction grant. Two separate grants, but they're bo- both blueprint grants. The transition grant is a blueprint transition fund who will let, that is additional funding that's provided to select LEAs to assist us in transitioning to the blueprint plan. This will continue to decline. The transitional supplemental instruction grant, um, provides school districts with additional transitional supplemental funds to use on K through second grade.
K two, yeah.
And that is slated to, um, discontinue funding after fiscal twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
So as we look at, um, developing our fiscal twenty twenty-six budget, we're constantly, uh, reviewing and monitoring the status of the county commissioners' budget deliberations. They began their budget deliberations on December tenth and will continue to review their information that's being publicized. Um, they are just, they're, uh, engaging in conversations about their income tax rate increase, um, and how that's impacting their revenues for next fiscal year. They did increase their income tax in the, for the current fiscal year's budget, and that rate, uh, increased from three percent to three point two percent beginning next month. And, uh, they also engage in conversations at their last meeting on their property tax, um, revenue increases as well. One of the slides that they shared at their meeting was a discussion about the maintenance of effort for St. Mary's County Public Schools. And this is a screenshot from their slide, where it reflects in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five column what the current appropriation to St. Mary's County Public Schools is from the county government of one hundred and thirty-four point three million dollars. However, this calculation reflected a per pupil allocation based on the current fiscal year's enrollment and not the three-year rolling average. So if the calculation were performed based on the current fiscal year's enrollment, per their calculation and maintenance of effort would be one hundred and thirty-one point seven million dollars, or a delta of approximately two point six million dollars. However, the state law states that, according to section, uh, five two oh one, that the enrollment count is the greater of the full-time enrollment as of September thirtieth in the current year, or that three-year rolling average. The entire compilation of, uh, the official enrollment is quite complex. Um, even though it is as of September thirtieth, there is a statewide reconciliation process that, uh, is engaged in between the LEAs and the state in the month of October, and it is finalized by December first per state law. When we look at the three-year rolling average, we first look back at the current year's local funding to determine the maintenance of effort. So on your left-hand side is the FY twenty-five maintenance of effort certification statement. And as you can see, the enrollment count for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, highlighted there in red, is sixteen thousand nine oh one. It's a little misleading, because the term enrollment count is actually referencing the three-year rolling average and not the September thirtieth enrollment in this particular case, because the three-year rolling average is the greater figure. And then the enrollment count for fiscal year twenty twenty-four of sixteen thousand seven fifty-five, again, is the three-year rolling average as well. On the left, on the right-hand side of this screen, we start the calculation with the fiscal year twenty twenty-five local funding, our highest appropriation of one hundred and thirty-four point three million dollars. We then take the three-year rolling average from fiscal twenty twenty-four of sixteen thousand seven fifty-five to determine the per pupil allocation amount of eight thousand nineteen dollars. Multiply that by the fiscal year twenty twenty-five enrollment three-year rolling average of sixteen thousand six forty to come up with a new maintenance of effort amount as our basis, per state law, of one hundred and thirty-three point four million dollars, or a decrease of nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The one hundred and thirty-three point four million dollars is the state required local contribution for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We're incredibly fortunate, though, that the county commissioners have, um, regularly supported the school district while in excess of maintenance of effort. The county commissioners' presentation last week included an expenditure analysis and forecast, which reflected funding to the Board of Education of level funding, which is nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars above maintenance of effort. The level funding amount is one hundred and thirty-four, one hundred and thirty-four point three million dollars. Interestingly, they also present the same level of funding in the out-years through fiscal twenty thirty. With other county government agencies, they reflected an increase in funding for fiscal twenty twenty-six and in the out-years of four percent growth. For the total, uh, elected officials outside of the Board of Education, they also reflected an increased growth of four percent. And with other state agencies, it reflected a growth increase of two percent.
So just to be really clear on this, maintenance of effort is what by law, a county must provide to a school system. If you have declining enrollment, that means that, that it can be a cut to the school system. To say we fully funded a school system because we've ma- met maintenance of effort means that you are flat funding your school system. And so with this forecast, for the reasons of projecting, they're using as a placeholder, flat funding for the school system for the next five years. And just to understand, that would be one thing if there was no revenue coming in. We are currently forty-four percent, a little more than forty-four percent of the overall revenues taken in in St. Mary's County, go to the St. Mary's County Board of Education. We have, at the years, we, we've been up, we've been up as high as over fifty percent. But if we are to maintain maintenance of effort, level funding, flat funding for the next five years, a- as the county receives more revenue, the school system will go from forty-four percent of the budget to forty-two percent of the revenues taken in, to forty, to thirty-eight, to thirty-six. So if we are to follow that multi-year forecast, that means that the school system would be ultimately finding itself at about a, you know, we'll, we will have gone from being a third, from being half of the revenue taken in to being less than forty percent. We start here every year, so there's no reason to be an alarmist. Every single year when we start the budget, um, they plug in for the school system, maintenance of effort. And then we engage in a very productive conversation about, you know, why you would want to invest in the lives of children and the lives of the people who work with children. And we've been very successful in, in, in having them all come together and realize that, yes, we are all part of the community. We, St. Mary's County is St. Mary's County Government, St. Mary's County Sheriff's Department, St. Mary's County Public Schools, St. Mary's County Library, we're all in this together. So for our planning purposes, we are choosing not necessarily to over, overly invest our time in a chart that shows us flat funded for the next five years. Instead, we believe that we would be, uh, approached the same way that anybody else would be approached. So if we were no different than county government, or the sheriff's department, or any, any other entity, and we were to be provided with that four percent increase in local funding, which is where we often end up, and sometimes in ex- in ex- in, in, above that. But if we were realistically to say four percent, that would be a five point three million dollar increase in local funding for St. Mary's County Public Schools. And that would make us the same as county government, and the sheriff's department, and every other agency. So that just kind of makes sense. If the state projected aid comes in at four point three, which is much lower than what we originally projected, we would have about nine point seven million dollars worth of new revenue with which to meet our obligations. So that is where we are with the budget. I know that there was some discussion on the tenth meeting about, it's time for a maintenance of effort budget for the school system. Uh, you know, I, I don't, again, I think that that's where we always start. But that's just, that's, that's more of a starting point, and that's never where we end. So that's where we assume we'll be as we start to go forward with our budget work and what would be presented to you in, um, in January, but...
But we are a component unit of the county government. Um, and a maintenance of effort budget would be quite challenging when we look at our compensation factors. Uh, as presented last week, the county government has some committed compensation factors. They have a market adjustment of three point six percent, representing two point seven million dollar increase for county government employees, a health insurance premium adjustment of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, payroll tax and pension, uh, contribution rate changes. And they also have pending a one percent COLA cost of one point seven million dollar increase, two and a half percent step increase of two point nine million dollar increase, a three percent staffing increase. And what they just committed to last week was also an EMS market adjustment of a million dollars. So likewise, St. Mary's County Public Schools has commitments in place for our negotiated agreements totaling eight and a half million dollars. For our ESMIC, the teachers' negotiated agreement, we have a step increase and a two percent COLA adjustment. For our ESMIC ESP, our support staff negotiated agreement, we have a new salary scale as well as a step and a one percent COLA adjustment. And for our SMAS, our administrators' negotiated agreement, we have a new scale, which represents a step and a one percent COLA, uh, as well. And just like the county government, we have health insurance and pension costs increases totaling two and a half million dollars. Uh, there was a statement made, uh, last week about our increases in our FY twenty-five school year for our teachers. Uh, so I wanted to address that statement, because it, it was stated that there was a sixteen percent increase in our, our SMCPS employee salaries in the current fiscal year. And the negotiated agreement, which is published online, specifically states that all employees who begin work on or before March first of twenty twenty-four will receive their normal step progression on the FY twenty-four salary scale. And if that is applicable to an employee, because some were already maxed on the scale, then that step increase would be two and a half percent. Then, the employees will be placed on the new career ladder salary scale at the next immediate step where the dollar amount is higher than a dollar amount once they have advanced one step on the prior fiscal year twenty-four salary scale. So indeed, some of our teachers did recognize an increase. Our teachers with, in, with one year of experience and a bachelor's degree indeed recognized a fifteen percent increase. Their fiscal twenty twenty-four salary was fifty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars. And their fiscal year twenty-five salary increased to sixty thousand five hundred dollars, representing a fifteen percent increase. We did this to raise our starting teacher salaries for recruitment and retention purposes as well as to meet the minimum blueprint required salary mandate per law. We also have teachers in every stage of their employment. So our teachers with ten years and a master's degree in APC in fiscal year twenty twenty-four were making seventy thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. And in the current year, increased to seventy-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, or a six percent increase. However, more, some of our more senior teachers at twenty years and a master's degree APC plus fifteen credits, for example, in fiscal twenty-four were making ninety-four thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. However, they recognized a nominal increase of point four percent to ninety-four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. An average overall increase to our teachers was three point eight four percent.
And why that's important is when somebody says, we're gonna do a salary scale adjustment of three point six percent, everybody gets it, right? Or if we just, we just say a COLA, everybody gets it. What was negotiated last year, and I have to give all credit to the negotiating team and for ESMIC itself, they recognized what was most important was making sure that our, our people who are entering into education have a salary that will keep them here, a livable salary. So all of the effort and all of the money went to teachers at, in the very beginning stages of their employment with St. Mary's County Public Schools. And so they got a big step up. And the sacrifice was that on the other side, the people who've been with us the longest are incredibly veteran, fantastic s- s- teachers. They really didn't get a raise last year. So for all of the money that we invested, it went to the people at the lower end of the scale. And what you're seeing in the other negotiated agreements is along the similar lines, where we are trying to get everybody to a competitive starting salary while not inflating the entire scale by twenty percent. Because if you just gave a fifteen percent raise to everybody, that, first of all, it couldn't be afforded. It would, it'd be an unrealistic, irresponsible thing to do. But this negotiated agreement, um, really was a, an artful recognition of what we needed to do most for our, our teachers, given the amount of money that we had on the table. And the county commissioners were exceptionally forthcoming with their, their work with us last year. And they recognized how incredibly important it was to have a starting salary that was competitive. And so they funded us well above maintenance of effort. And it was, I mean, it was a very, very hopeful year. We ended that year, um, I think, and, and it was a, it was a highlight of my time in working in St. Mary's County. Um, and so, based on our experiences last year, I know that whatever, wherever we may be today, that's not necessarily where we're gonna end up at the end of the year. So, just wanted to correct that, nobody got it. Some, some people did get a fifteen percent increase. But God bless, they were the people who most recently have joined us and desperately needed to have that money to have a competitive salary. And the only way they were able to get it was that other people sacrificed, get- And the only way they were able to get it was that other people sacrificed getting a comparable amount of increase, so.
So in full transparency, um, all of our negotiated agreements are published on our website. And fiscal twenty twenty-six per the uh teachers' ESMIC agreement, all employees who begin work on or before March first will receive a step increase, and they will also receive a two percent COLA adjustment. For the ESP, our support staff contract, they will re- be receiving their normal step progression as well as moving one range to the right on the new salary scale, as well as a salary scale adjustment of one percent. And for the administrators' MASA agreement, it includes a new uh salary scale in twenty twenty-six and then a one-step increase on that new salary scale as well as a one percent salary scale adjustment. So going back to enrollment again, the current year's enrollment did indeed impact our projected funding for twenty twenty-six. If our enrollment maintained at our fiscal year twenty twenty-four, our September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three numbers, that enrollment was sixteen thousand six ninety-nine, the three-year rolling average would then have been sixteen thousand seven fifty versus our actual enrollment at sixteen thousand three seventy and the three-year rolling average of sixteen thousand six forty. So that impacts the state aid by a differential of one point eight million dollars and local maintenance of effort by a differential eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So we would have indeed had a greater projected outlook for fiscal year twenty twenty-six by two point six million dollars if our enrollment had remained level with last fiscal year. Our previous forecast for twenty twenty-six, if we had assumed that constant amount and assuming a four percent growth in our local funding, comparable to what the projection was for county departments of five point three million dollars plus our projected state aid of four point three million dollars, we would have added an additional state aid amount of one point eight million dollars or an overall amount of eleven point five million dollars per our previous projections of level enrollment. An increase of four percent to our total Saint Mary's County Public School budget would have been eleven point three million dollars. So we were about two hundred thousand dollars under the projected revenues.
So we agree that if slugging in a four percent growth number is probably a really effective uh measure to project what the future expenses, operating expenses for any organization might be.
But we always need to consider a worst-case scenario as well. So looking at our local funding, maintenance of effort, if we don't receive um anything but maintenance of effort, that would re- represent a decrease in our funding of nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. We originally spoke of a projected increase of state aid of four point three million dollars. However, we also discussed the potential cut to foundation funding for the collaborative planning time monies, and that has a price tag of two point seven million dollars. Therefore, our worst-case scenario at this time would be an increase of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to our budget.
So all we wanna do is we just wanna make sure that, go back one slide. This is, this is what we planned for, this is what we're built on. These are all the numbers that we had when we went into negotiations and we've worked this all through. And we figured that this year would be pretty much a sail-through, it makes sense, everything seems to be rectified, we're in good shape. Um, worst-case scenario is we really totally flat-funded both from the state and the local uh with very limited funds and will have to plan accordingly. That means that as we move forward with the budget, we'll be, we'll be sin- providing multiple scenarios.
With the focus being on staff compensation. The county commissioners, they have a staff size of approximately a thousand employees. Their compensa- compensation cost projected for next year is an increase of eight point six million dollars. We have a staff of just over two thousand employees. Our compensation cost at the, at this time is projected at just over eleven million dollars.
So big numbers.
Absolutely.
All the way around.
Uh, this is your up to upcoming budget calendar, we'll be reconvening on January ninth with a presentation of the superintendent's budget, followed by budget work session on January fifteenth. January twenty-second will be the public hearing. Um, and then your deliberations and then approval of the recommended budget by the Board of Education to go across the street to the county commissioners on February fifth. Of note is the April twenty-second date, and that is the commissioner's scheduled public hearing date. And then this commissioner is scheduled to uh provide final direction on their budget on May twentieth. And your adoption of the budget is currently scheduled for May twenty-first. On the state side, uh, the legislative session starts on January eighth, one day before the superintendent's proposed budget, and the governor's budget is set to be released on January fifteenth. Are there any questions?
Yeah, no questions, thank you for your dis- diligent work.
Did you say that you expected an increase in uh FARMs applications, is that what you said?
We would love to see an increase in FARMs applications because unfortunately, we recognized a decrease of about sixty-one FARMs applications in the current fiscal year, but we don't believe that that represents the demographics of the county.
So you believe that that could potentially change?
Um, not for our compensatory education funding for next school year, but certainly uh we're, we're continuing to um uh seek out the the families that are in need and provide them the support needed during the course of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
When will the commissioners be looking at the budget for the board?
Your budget is due to go across the street to the county commissioners on February fifth.
Okay, so they have from the fifth until when to make a decision?
Um, up until May twentieth.
Okay, 'cause I've read something online about February the twenty-fifth.
That may be one of the first dates that they're considering our budget.
That may be when I get called before them to have their, to have their budget work session.
It's during their work sessions, I believe.
Yeah, I, yeah, so it'll be a, that'll be another two weeks.
In the entire month of February, they they are doing multiple budget work sessions.
And into April, right.
Thank you. That's all for me.
We have to continue to advocate and collaborate for the Board of Education's budget um with the county commissioners, and um this is just the beginning. This is not the end, so I remain hopeful that we will be able to do what we need to do to move the system forward and to be able to do what we agreed to in the negotiated agreements.
I appreciate all of the work that's been done by staff here um and by others who have been working to um for quite some time um so that there would be no surprises for um the commissioners as our budget numbers um continue to roll out. Um, I'm, I'm especially pleased by the the collaboration that's gone on. Um, and uh and that Dr. Smith and Mrs. Bailey have worked so hard to make sure, um, a- as has Mrs. McCourt, that um the commissioners have uh all of the information they need um and so that they're not surprised by anything. Um, and that collaboration has worked well for us over these last number of years. Um, and I look forward to that continuing. We all want the best outcome for our community writ large. Um, and a big part of that is making sure that um this is the kind of place people want to move to. Um, where they know that their children will get a good education. Um, we don't spend the largest amount of money per pupil funding that um that some of the other counties in Maryland receive. Um, but I think we do quite well with the monies we do receive and um and so I, you know, this is a process, and I look forward to that process continuing. The most important thing is to have those conversations, so.
My comment is going to be, um, over the past few weeks, I've been in several meetings with Dr. Wright, who's been talking a lot about statistics and when you analyze da- uh when you analyze data. And heard cautionary tale to everyone is that when you look at the data, you have to understand that there is still a face behind that number, right? So we have, however we certify it, almost sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy students.
Seventeen thousand students.
Okay.
Overall, but only sixteen thousand three hundred that are eligible.
Seventeen thousand students that come into our buildings every single day. So I appreciate the challenge that the county commissioners have and in plugging in a a number, MOE or whatever it is. But I encourage everyone to step back and see what the body of work is of the school system and how that benefits, right? Because just sticking in random numbers in order to make a spreadsheet work, and heaven knows I like spreadsheets, um, is probably not always the best solution. So I agree, I think everyone has to work together because it is not fair to those seventeen thousand students that we begin taking things away from them that they depend on.
Or.
Might not need as much as what they had before because we don't have as many students.
Right.
But those basic things, because if if you go into any school, and you guys know, they're not, you know, they're worried about their lunch, you know, they like lunch, they like sports, they like, they like all of those things that make them part of that community, and that's what we have to hold on to, right? And it's not just, it's not just us, the, you know, private schools have seen decline in enrollments also. I mean, and part of that is the demographics now of this county. People aren't moving here to have a starter home.
Right.
It it's just not, your median home price is half a million dollars.
Yeah.
So that's probably the main drivers to why we aren't seeing the elementary kids, you know, stream into this county like Frederick County or Carroll County or other places.
Right.
So that is my, behind every number is a student or a teacher or a staff member.
It is, it is just important to know that we are going to be presenting a budget on January ninth based on the information that we have on January ninth. We will be presenting a budget every other, every week that we get together based on the information as we know it at the, at the time. Um, the state is facing a gigantic structural deficit, and it's not, and it's not because of education, okay? The state has a spending problem, we are not it. Um, the county does not have a structural uh uh.
Deficit?
Deficit. The county is in very good shape. And there's a very good chance that the better the shape the county gets in, the less the state's going to provide down here. Because we are a conservative county, because we do make very fiscally prudent decisions, because we do believe that every dollar is dear. We are in great shape to weather anything that might come along and actually uh even excel in in some of the greater struggles that other people might be seeing. So we are, the county is in very good shape. So that's, that is an important uh element to remember that when we're talking about a deficit at the state, we're not talking about the same challenges here in this county. There will certainly be counties that are deeply affected by next year's budget. I don't necessarily think that we're gonna be one of them, so.
Okay.
It'll be fun.
Anyone have anything else? All right, so as we've mentioned several times, our next board meeting will be on Thursday, January ninth, executive session at eight, and the open meeting will begin at nine. And with that, we are adjourned.